The City of New Brunswick mixed planning board meeting of May 9th, 2022, 7:00 PM. I'll begin with roll call. All right, Yelitza Cheko?
Here.
Matt Ferguson. Mrs. Nancy Cora Ludwig?
Here.
Crystal Lattella?
Here.
Ivan Adorno?
Here.
Diana Lopez? Zach Wright?
Here.
Anthony Camione?
Here.
George Shadid? Bob Cardika?
I'm here.
Emo Castaneda?
Here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have eight members present tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, can you read the public announcement?
All right. Please be advised that the New Brunswick Guilty Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied at the annual notice which gives official notice in the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of City of New Brunswick Planning Board has been filed to the City Clerk and has been placed on a republican bulletin board at the back of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows and lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to official newspapers for the City of New Brunswick, mainly the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger.
Great, thank you. Can all stand to the flag?
I believe this is the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
On to section four, minutes of the board's April 11th, 2022 meeting.
Chairman Castaneda?
Yes.
On May, there is an error that Ms. Diana Lopez was not present. So if you would move the minutes, it would be with correction that Ms. Diana Lopez is not marked as present for that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have anything to review or can I get a motion?
Eligible voters would be Yelitza Cheko, Crystal Lattella, Ivan Adorno, Zach Wright, Anthony Camione, and Manny Castaneda.
Thank you.
Motion to approve with the correction?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, Yelitza Cheko?
Yes.
And then, well, Crystal Lattella?
Yes.
Ivan Adorno?
Here.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Anthony Camione?
Yes.
Emo Castaneda?
Yes.
You?
Moving forward to section five, public hearings, first only public hearing, A243-245 George Street LLC, slash 245 George Street, slash block 120, lot 2.01, PBD 2022-04. Preliminary and site, final site plan application with C variances to construct a four-story mixed-use building consisting of three retail units and 18 residential units. No off-street parking is proposed in the District C4 Downtown Commercial.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Peter Landfrit. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. This application is actually an update of a modification of an application that was approved by this board in 2014. In 2014, an applicant came in to develop this site under the name of Egyptian Gardens. That application was for three commercial establishments on the first floor, an apartment on the first floor, and then two stories or two floors of apartments. So there was a total of 13 apartments and three commercial spaces. With the passage of time, with the pandemic, the applicant never started the building and in reevaluating everything has decided to amend, in essence, the application to add a fourth story to the building to eliminate the apartment on the first floor so that instead of 13 apartments, we now have 18. Other than that, the app, and we also made some improvements to the site based on meetings that we've had with your staff. This application was actually filed originally in July of last year, and we've had numerous TAC meetings. We actually started with a five-story building and we cut it back down to four stories. And so we're here tonight for the four-story building. I intend to call three witnesses, the architect who designed the building, the site engineer, and the, our planner. And I think in making the presentation, I think it's probably best for us to show you what was approved and then the improvements with this new plan. So having said that, I'd like to call Mr. Ragab as my first witness. Okay, well.
Can you please state your names, but your last name for the record?
First name is Ashraf, A-S-H-R-A-F. Last name is Ragab, R-A-G-A-B.
Do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Ragab, what is your occupation?
I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, principal of Amara Design Studio.
Okay, and can you briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Architecture from City College of New York in 1994. I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 2002 and a principal of Amara Design Studio since 2001.
And have you testified before this board on prior occasions?
Yes.
And as a matter of fact, were you the architect who prepared the plans under the name of Egyptian Gardens in 2014?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Can you briefly indicate to the board what was proposed in 2014?
It was sort of a similar building, except that there were one ADA apartment on the ground floor behind the retail spaces. So we still had three retail spaces facing George Street. There was an ADA apartment here. There was no elevator, and there were two floors above six residential units each floor, for a total of 13 residential units and three commercial spaces. There was a basement also, and there was pretty much, all the apartments were one-bedroom apartments. The elevations look quite different. They were designed over 10 years ago, so these elevations were changed quite a bit to catch up with the times.
Okay, now, flip back to the first page. This is the plan set that was submitted in conjunction with the application?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we do not have to have them marked as part of your plan set. And on the first page, you have a colored rendering of the building?
Yes.
All right, can you please describe to the board the building that we are proposing?
We're also proposing a mixed-use four-story plus cellar building. The four stories above grade are three retail spaces on grade and three residential units above of six units each, for a total of 18 residential units. The space behind the retail was revised from the previous apartment into a loading dock for small trucks and an amenity space which would be served, serve it like as a club room for the residential units. The lobby on the side was enlarged. There's a package room, mailbox area, and then there's a access through the elevator and the staircase from the lobby.
And access to the building, although the building fronts on George Street, access to the building is on the side street on Tabernacle?
Residential units have to access the building from Tabernacle, and there's an emergency exit to the back alley of the building with a walkway from that emergency exit all the way out to Tabernacle Way.
Okay. And you indicated in your opening comments that the original plan had one-bedroom apartments. These are still one-bedroom apartments?
Yes.
All right, can you show the board what the typical apartment would look like?
So it's a double-loaded building, so two staircases, one on each side of the building. There's a corridor that connects the two with three apartment units on each side. Each one is one-bedroom with quite a large living space, dining, living, and kitchen that reaches all the way to the front and to the back of the building.
Okay, and what is the approximate size of the units?
The range from, there's 1,004, and we would add to 868. So from the 800s into 1,000-plus.
Okay, and the reason for the difference in size is?
It's just the layout, the elevator, the staircase shifts from floor to floor because we have to reach in to access the back exit, and the layout kind of shifts a little bit from one side to the other. So the units are not completely.
They change a little bit. Okay. Now, you indicated that in the original application, the original approval, there was no elevator. This building now has an elevator.
That's correct.
Okay, in the original application, it was approved, there was no segregation between access to the rear of the commercial spaces and the residential spaces. Is that correct?
Yeah, we always had a corridor in the back of the building that connects the retail spaces to the loading dock in the back, and that also served as exit for the residential. But now we kind of segregated the stair from the residential directly to the outside. There's still an access door to the side, but that should be controlled by the building management. And there's also an access door towards the lobby that should also be controlled by the building manager. So it would probably be locked at most times.
Okay. Now, the access to the commercial spaces for shoppers, whatever the spaces may be, are all on George Street, correct?
All on George Street.
Okay, and now you-
There's a possibility of having doors on Tabernacle from the corner unit because there's a lot of glass, and there is, it's quite a bit of a setback here from the property line. So there is a potential, if this is an assembly place, to have maybe a sitting area outside of here.
Now, you indicated that there's a loading area. Deliveries are going to come into the site on Tabernacle, correct?
Yes.
And then how do they get into the commercial space?
So the small truck or van would park here, it would unload, it would come through that door to the back of the commercial spaces, or it would come from, I think this unit only can be accessed from the front. So this is, the last commercial unit is the smallest one, and it has only one exit to the front.
And you indicated that there is a basement. Is that basement available to both the residential and commercial tenants?
The basement is split up almost down the middle. The front part of it has staircases that go up into the retail spaces to be used for storage by the commercial spaces. The backside of the basement has storage bins or, you know, or self-storage kind of units that, to be used by the tenants, and bicycle storage, and a couple of mechanical and storage spaces in the back, and still access for the stairs and the elevator for the tenants.
And so if a tenant has a bicycle, it can be securely stored in the basement? It doesn't have to be brought up to the apartment?
No, there's 18 wall-mounted bike rack spaces, one per unit in this room in the basement.
Okay, and just one last question. Please review with the board as far as the tenant access and package storage and the assembly area, where that is, and how a tenant would get to their tenant's face.
So this is the main staircase, and this is the elevator. The tenants would come down to the lobby into this area, and then the package room is right off of the lobby. The amenity room or the assembly space is also right off of the lobby, and the mailboxes are right here. So this area should be used for tenants to access packages, club room, and-
Meals, mailboxes. I lied, I have another question. Sure. How do you handle refuse?
So there is a chute, like a double chute, one for regular, one for recyclables, in every floor up of the corridor, right behind the elevator. So there's a trash room with a small door into, these two doors into the chutes, and that goes all the way to the ground floor where there is a trash compactor room that receives the trash from these chutes. And for additional storage, we created that sort of an area exposed to the loading dock where if we need extra storage, you would take the bins through the corridor and store them here. So the van, the garbage truck would come and pick these up from the loading area.
So the residents would merely, if they have garbage, take their garbage and put in a chute both the recyclable and the household waste, and it would go to a compactor room?
That's correct.
Okay. And the commercial tenants, how would they handle their garbage?
I believe they would have to contract with a, with a carting company.
Right, and there is sufficient room to store some of their garbage in the basement before it is picked up?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any restrictions on the type of retail uses that would be in those?
Really? No, there is no restriction.
And for the record, we do not have any prospective tenants, so we don't know what may be there.
For, for the commercial businesses there, there are those three commercial businesses, you're looking at storing the trash in the basement?
Well, I mean, it's up to the, the, the commercial spaces, what kind of arrangement they have with the, with the trash company. Probably some of them will have daily pickup, so they don't have to store the trash. At the end of the day, they will just take it out and the truck would take it out. If they elect to have, you know, multiple days without pickup, and it depends on the use. If it's a restaurant or eating establishment, there will be a lot more trash. If it's something professional, there'll be barely any trash. So it all depends on the tenants and the agreement they have with the trash company. But they do have space in the basement if they elect to.
Yeah. Is the building sprinkled?
Yeah, it has.
The commercial spaces as well as residential?
Yes.
I have one question. So you mentioned that it will be up to the commercial entities to contract with the garbage company. Is there any requirement that they would, you know, if they're, so their discretion, they can, they can, they can make the, you know, the pickup daily, or they can make it, you know, weekly. The concern would be, you know, make sure that they're actually getting the garbage out appropriately.
Yeah, yeah. We're intent to abide by the codes, and if the board would like to put conditions on that, let's-
Obviously, Mr. Chairman, if it is an eating establishment, they generate more waste, and we have to make arrangements for more frequent pickup. If it's something like a Verizon store or something like that that generates this paper, the pickups don't have to be as often. Obviously, my client will manage the building, will have, in the leases, depending on what the tenant is doing, provide or make provisions for garbage pickup as needed for their respective tenant.
Any other questions from the board?
Just, just usually what happens is for commercial structures like this, they'll have an area identified for trash storage, you know, prior, you know?
Well, we've identified that area, which is the basement, yeah.
I mean, saying the basement's not necessarily the best place to put trash. Usually you have a refuge room that's established for that, just like how you have the residential area with a place to put it.
Is, is there, Ashraf, is there a place perhaps?
Well, I mean, we, we did inquire about the trash capacity for the building, and we were told that we needed to expand. We had a smaller trash room before. So we enlarged the trash compactor room, which has enough room in it for storage, and we added those three additional containers right off of the loading dock for more storage capacity. So again, it will be up to the building management to distribute that, you know, we do have sufficient trash storage capacity in the building. Between a large compactor room and this additional area outside. So some of it might be dedicated to the commercial spaces.
Would, would, right now, it's our intent to handle all the residential garbage through the compactor room?
Yes.
So that that outside area can be used by the commercial tenants if need be?
Yes. Depends on the size that comes up, yeah. If there's, you know, maybe we need one, only overflow bin for the residential, the other two would be dedicated for the commercial.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
You could proceed with your next witness.
Mr. DuPont, excuse me, what is the revision date, the latest revision date on this plan?
Right now, it says January 25th, 2022.
Thank you.
Mr. DuPont?
Can you please state your names, but your last name for the record?
John P. DuPont, D-U capital P-O-N-T.
Do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
What is yours?
Mr. DuPont, you're a licensed engineer of the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And how long have you been so licensed?
I have 25, about 27 years.
Okay, and you were also the engineer of record in the original application for Egyptian Gardens?
I certainly was.
And you were qualified on that evening as an expert in engineering?
Yes.
And your credentials have not changed?
No.
I assume in the last 10 years, you probably got smarter?
At least more experienced.
More experienced. Did you this evening bring with you the plans that were approved in 2014?
I did not.
Okay, so we just have this evening's plans?
They have a copy if you want to.
Of the 2014 or?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. We thought it from here up to there.
Okay.
Okay. And if you're going to reference these plans, I guess we should have those marked as A1 because they were not part of the original set. And describe to the board the site plan that was approved by this board in 2014.
Okay, well, basically, so you're familiar, right? We're talking about the corner property of George Street and Tabernacle Way. It's 7,500 square feet, and it is located in the C4 Downtown Commercial slash All Precinct. To give you a little background before the previous application, there used to be a one-story commercial building on the property that's been demolished since, and the property's currently vacant. So when we came to in 2014, we got approval for a three-story mixed-use building. First floor, as you heard, was retail spaces, three spaces, and there were 13 residential units. Basically, that building almost took up the entire space. We didn't provide for any onsite parking. There was little to no buffer at all. There were some planters proposed, and, and there was some, there was an alleyway in the back. There wasn't even a delivery zone in the back or a loading area. So that's where we were. Now today, we're proposing, if I could switch to, Peter, skip through something, you want to bring me back, bring me back, but-
Okay.
This set of plans I have on, is the, in fact, the submitted set that you-
Yeah.
I'm going to shift to sheet three. And I believe I can mark it because it's exactly what we submitted. So sheet three is the preliminary final site plan, and I'm just going to stay on the other side so I'm blocking the view. So, so previously, the building engulfed the entire site, really did. There was almost nothing except for a small alleyway in the back. Today's building on this property, got a little smaller, made a couple improvements here. Again, it's still, the building is going almost to the property line along George Street. It's going very close to the property line adjacent away from Tabernacle, which is their residential building. Even by Tabernacle, it's reaching out, but the rear of the building has been shrunk down. Couple improvements made. So we did go one more story than previously approved, as you heard. We did add more residential units. We created a buffer in the back. It was zero before, now we have a five-foot buffer with a fence, a six-foot-high fence in the back, kind of making that a little better. There's an, there's a proposed concrete walkway in the back to help service those residential, sorry, the retail spaces, so they could access, bring garbage out, anything they need to do in the back, bring in supplies. And we constructed a loading area. So big improvement from last time. Had to get 18 residential units and three retail spaces, deliveries, and anytime material needs to come in and out, garbage removal. Well, now there's a loading space there, and it's covered. 13-and-a-half-foot clear space, so your Amazon truck, your garbage truck, your 17-foot box truck, you can all access in that loading zone in the back. I think it's a significant improvement from previous plan. Similar to the previous plan, we have site lighting. It's building-mounted lights around the perimeter. Nothing on the retail side, but we do the back to light the back area. Tabernacle sidewalk and George Street, limited to spill. A lot of discussion at TRC meetings about spillage and not impacting neighboring properties. Think we've got a good plan now. Because the property was previously developed, but we are still increasing the impervious slash regulated surfaces on this property. So we increased the runoff. We are listed as a minor storm management project according to the state and your ordinance, but we still had to account for any increase in runoff. So we designed a stone septic pit underneath that loading dock. It's going to be a stone pit connected to an overflow, to a slotted drain, to the curb line. We've already, we sized it, probably too conservative, but we sized it well. We've already done soil testing. The soils work in the area very well. It passed a little perk test, so I think it's an effective design. We even did, took some advice from the TRC committee meeting. There was a small area towards the back corner, away from the street, as far back in the corner, where perhaps some water might pond. So we put a second pit right in that corner, right where our soil testing was, small, three by three, three feet deep, just to make sure there's no ponding water, no adverse impact to the neighboring, no water running off on the neighboring side. So we thought that was important, and we did that. As far as relief that you're going to hear testimony to, just to give you a little overview. So we're here for a couple reasons. The maximum building height allowed is 40 feet. This application proposes 43.5. The parking spaces, there's 47 spaces required for building such as this. Like this first development, we're proposing zero onsite. So we need a variance for that. In that parking calculation, because of the new electrical vehicle requirements, seven of those spaces are supposed to be electric, so we'll need a variance for that as well. Similar to the original project, we had no buffer. Now we have a buffer. It still is not 10 feet wide and 10 feet tall. So we're still in a waiver for, for the buffer. We made it simply, we made it very much, you know, much approved here, didn't meet the ordinance though. And as far as foundation plantings, the last area we need relief. We're required to put foundation plantings around both sides of the building. In this setting and kind of how it's figured, that way it wasn't possible. But we do have planters along Tabernacle and George Street. It really softened the look when we think, meet the intent of ordinance. So that's, that's the relief, and you're going to hear testimony from our planner about that. The next thing is, just want to tell you, we've received your two professional staff planning letters. Bignell Planning has a May 4th letter. We read it, reviewed it. We have no concerns of any of it. We can meet all the requirements. I think they're all good, solid comments, have no problem. Your engineer, Mr. Burke, provided us a letter March 9th. We, again, have no objections with any points in the letter. We think we've met every condition. I think you're familiar with it. Your TRC meetings are very detailed. We get a lot of work done. It's, it's really a great technical meeting so we can iron a lot of things before we get here. So I think this plan, meet your professional staff's idea with the best possible case is, and I think we met the intent of the ordinance.
Okay, and you indicated that we can meet the staff reports of Bignell Consulting and also Mr. Burke. In meeting those requirements or requests and in making modifications to the plan, do they any way substantially alter what the board is looking at this evening, or are the modifications basically minor or technical in nature?
Very minor at this point, very.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
So you're asking us to approve this with zero parking spaces? The 2014 application, that also, you said, had no parking spaces?
That is correct.
And that was approved, that was approved?
That was.
Where do these folks park?
You're going to hear testimony.
You'll hear testimony from the next witness.
Okay. All right. That's fine. I'll wait. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Could there be some consideration here that the trucks that would service the commercial facilities at this place be limited to only the ones that could fit in that loading area such that there's a restriction that, you know, no 53-footers or 54-footers or whatever servicing the site for delivery purposes?
Based on the nature of what the tenants are going to be, which are small tenants, we don't envision large trucks coming to the site. I think John has been put signage.
Yeah. One of the comments from your professional staff was in fact, they included a sign showing the size. I mean, we agree to that.
Any other questions?
I'm not sure that that answered my question.
The answer is we don't envision having any large trucks. Second of all, if a large truck should show up, it can't fit within that driveway. And that driveway.
It might block Tabernacle Way.
It's a one-way. It's a one-way street.
Yeah.
It's only 13.5 feet tall. So like a tractor trailer, 55 footer is not going, he'll never go, reach it.
No, I think what you're saying is that.
That they might just block Tabernacle Way or climb on the side.
Block Tabernacle if they can't fit in there.
Right.
Which is a one-way street. There's not a lot of rumor around there.
I mean, I, again, I think to the extent that we can control our tenants and advise them that, you know, any deliveries have to be made by box truck, we will. Can I 100% guarantee that will happen 365 days a year? You know, I can't guarantee it, but I mean, we will do what we can to make sure that all the deliveries are made by the appropriate vehicles that can fit into our loading area.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Here.
One of the other items that was raised in the staff report was, I think it was in Mr. Burke's report, was that he wanted a Phase 1 environmental because there was a concern that this site may have at one time has a dry cleaner. I do have an environmental report by HSRP Independent Consultants. I will mark that as A2 and I will also PDF a copy so that Mr. Burke has it and I don't know, Todd and you, we'll get it to Mr. Burke. So I'll mark that as A2.
Do you want to take that down?
And I will call my third witness, Ms. Caphone.
Do you want me to come in there, stand back here?
Oh, come on.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'd like to have the break.
Please state your name, spot your last name for the record.
Yes, it's Nazaro, N A Z Z A R O, Caphone, C O F as in Frank, O N E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Christine, you're a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
I certainly am. I just renewed my license, so I'm good for the next two years. I've been practicing in New Jersey for 27 years. Or I have been qualified as an expert witness in planning by well over 400 planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I am a graduate of the Glassing School. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rucker Center for Government Services. I'm also an affordable housing special master in about 24 or so communities. I am also the planner of record for the Casino Redevelopment Authority in Atlantic City. And I testify very frequently on planning and zoning board applications. And I've been qualified here in New Brunswick.
I would offer the testimony of Ms. Caphone as a licensed planner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Caphone, can you indicate to the board why we're here tonight?
So this is a pretty clean application. This is, the site's vacant as was described by prior witnesses. We are, this is in the city's C4 zoning district, but we just need a handful of variances. We do need a variance for parking. That's obviously the elephant of the room. When you look at the notices, you see we're providing none onsite, but that was exactly consistent with what was done in 2014. So our engineer just went, ran through the variances. There's only four of them. It's the parking, the building height, the EV spaces, the electronic vehicle spaces. Obviously, if we're not providing any parking, we're not going to be providing those EV stations either. And then you have the buffering, which we are proposing a fence, which our plan indicates. And some plantings where there was none really at the last go-around. So you can grant these variances under, in my opinion, the C2 statutory criteria where if you find that one or more purposes of the land use law is advanced by the grant of the variance, you can certainly grant the relief. It's called a flexible seat where there's really no hardship, but there's some planning benefit to having the site redeveloped. So obviously, we knew the parking would be an issue. So my office was working diligently and to get contacts from the New Brunswick Parking Authority, to contact them to see about availability in the Morris Street, which is only .2 miles from here. So we were able to get a letter and we can certainly submit this to your board secretary. I believe we sent it to Mr. Lanford. I'm not sure if we submitted it into the board, but we can certainly do that. It is a letter from the executive director indicating that they recognize, the New Brunswick Parking Authority recognizes the parking demand for the proposed project at George Street and that it can make available up to 62 monthly access cars for the site. So there certainly is a solution and I believe that that is what the solution was. I didn't testify on the last application in 2014, but I believe that that was the solution. So in addition, rather than just coming here as a planner and telling you, yes, we contacted the authority and they have the available spaces. My office did go out and look at that deck on two occasions. We went on this past Friday night and then the prior every Thursday afternoon. And what generally we observed was that, the deck was pretty full on the lower levels, but then from the sixth floor up, from the sixth to the 10th, there was plenty of availability. And I think on one day, we counted 77 spaces on Friday night. Now, Friday was a terrible night, right? It was an awful night for weather. So we're thinking maybe some people would stay home. So we counted 77 available spaces on what you would think would be like a peak hour for Friday night. So, but that's consistent. So our findings were consistent with the representation that the parking authority made to us in the letter, which again, we're happy to submit to the board. In addition, in addition to the parking deck, what we looked at was the availability of on-street parking. And we did find that there were parking spaces available both on Livingston, on George, on Morris and Tabernacle. You know, there are more spaces available on Livingston than any of the other streets, but certainly spaces available on all of those streets when we went out and observed the deck. So I think the board can certainly be comfortable that despite the fact that we are asking for a variance, there's a solution. And that really boils down to, in my opinion, the negative criteria, right? That's what we do as planners, you as board members, me as the applicant's planner. We're always trying to balance these things and say, okay, well, the land use law requires us to establish a positive criteria. So I think in this case, we could be guided by Criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. The C4 downtown commercial district, the intent and purpose of that district, and this is right from your zoning ordinance in New Brunswick, is to provide for the expansion and preserve the pedestrian scale of the downtown and the central business district. So I think we do provide for the expansion and we certainly create a critical mass of intensity and we have the pedestrian scale because we do have stores on our bottom floor. That's what we're proposing. So I think we're spot on with respect to the stated purpose and this being an appropriate location. I also think the board can look at Criteria E, which talks about the establishment of appropriate population densities. While we are asking for, within my opinion, a fairly de minimis height variance and a parking variance, I think the board could look at this as an appropriate population density. The area can certainly support the parking that's required. And if you were to stand on George Street on the subject property, you can certainly stand there and, you know, in your view shed is multiple, multiple, I counted five today when I was out there, buildings that are substantially taller than the subject application. So I think the board can certainly rely on Criteria E. Criteria I also talks about creating a desirable visual environment. I think if you look at, I'm not sure if we have this rendered version marked as evidence. Peter, did we mark this in today?
That's part of the plan set.
Okay, so it's part of the plan set. I think certainly Criteria I is appropriate here. It talks about creating a desirable visual environment. I think our building has great curb appeal and certainly an improvement to the vacant lot that's really in the heart of this downtown district. So a vacant lot is really doing nothing for anybody in the center of a downtown district. So I think that that's certainly a benefit. Statutorily, we only have to advance one or more purposes of the land use law. I just cited three. It was Criteria G, E, and I that I think are advanced and the board can rely for the satisfaction of the positive criteria. And then that leaves us with the negative criteria. And the land use law does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment and there's no substantial detriment to the public good, which is the area that surrounds it, and the zone plan. So I feel, you know, based on the fact that we meet all the bulk criteria, we're actually pretty well under the FAR for this site. I think the FAR in the zone is allowed to be four or less than 3.5. So certainly not creeping up to a situation where the intensity of the project is overwhelming to what the C4 zone envisioned here. I think that's an important consideration. When you look at the negative criteria, obviously parking, these are all one-bedroom units too. And I think that that's important because when you're looking at parking demand, right? What do we look at? We look at bedrooms. So these are all one-bedroom units. You know, if we were coming to you with 16-3 or 18-3 bedroom units, it might be a little bit different feel, it might be a little different for the deck to absorb them, but that's not the case. They're all one-bedroom units. So I think that's an important consideration when you're looking at the negative criteria and balancing that. So I think statutorily, in my opinion, as a planner who's been doing this for 27 years and has testified on nearly thousands of applications, that we are certainly satisfying the burden of proof with respect to the positive and negative criteria and that the board can move the variances without any substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan.
Christine, in 2014, we had no designated bicycle storage area. Does the fact that this new plan with a designated bicycle area also assist the board in making a determination with regard to the lack of parking? Also, George Street has bus routes. Does that help the board in making a decision?
Yes, that was in my outline. So I feel like you're an objectionous attorney firing these questions at me. Mr. Lanford, can I answer the first question? So is it the first question, the bike? Absolutely, of course it does. I should have said that affirmatively. And not only does it help, but your ordinance requires it. So it's not like we're doing something actually, your ordinance actually requires us to do that. So we do have to provide the parking, but it absolutely does. I mean, when you're out there, I'm in New Brunswick a lot at the courthouse, you know, for the past years for many, many, many things in the city, frequently for different things. So I think you, I can't remember a time being here when you don't see people on bikes. So I think it is important, it's an important fabric of the community to have the bikes. So that was the first question. The second question was the bus routes, the proximity of bus routes. Yes, we looked at them and I, there are a number of them. I have my office pull which ones are nearest. There were at least like five or six different bus routes that were walkable to the subject property. The other thing that's important in addition to the bus routes is we're, I think, .8 from the hospital and .4 from J&amp;J. It's either, that could be reversed, it's .8 and .4. I'm not exactly sure which one, I don't recall, but the numbers. But we're near major employment centers. It's a walkable community. So I think the board can comfortably grant a variance. I mean, you did it previously for 13 units. We're adding five additional units and they're all one-bedroom. So I'm just, I'm not seeing where we jump to the substantial detriment.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
And we do try to promote walkability within the city of New Brunswick. It is a good area for that. Would you be willing to give up the on-street parking permits that the city offers?
I'd have to defer to my client to see.
I don't think there are any on-street parking permits in this area.
Is that a permanent area?
I think there are parking, permit parking nearby within a block or two. I don't know. I think they're usually by the ward, so they may be in the same ward and be permitted to park over there. I want to say up by the pharmacy and over there, I think there's a couple of blocks that are permanent parking. Also, the neighborhood could become permanent parking in the future. So you could preemptively waive rights to that.
If, I don't believe there are any permits required in this area, so, but in the future, if there are, we would not seek any.
And we can make that a condition?
We could make that a condition, too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. We were asking for a parking areas. I think that would be a reasonable condition.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick questions, not necessarily for Mrs. Caphone of our work phone.
Whatever. Christine, it's fine.
Just for, yeah. Just on the parking variance, perhaps for the applicant's attorney. You are understanding, you understand that there's a payment in lieu of parking ordinance that the city's adopted? You're agreeing and recognizing that you're going to have to pay into that fund for the deficit of parking spaces?
I didn't get there yet, but yes, the answer is yes. We understand.
I wouldn't let you forget that part. And just one other thing, I didn't hear the testimony. I'm not sure who the right witness would be, but just clarify for the board how residential parcel deliveries are going to go into the building, where they're going to go, and also just how that is going to just be balanced with building security?
Okay.
Do you want to come back up?
I got one of my clients do that. While we're doing that, I do have the letter from the parking authority. I think it should go with the evidence. I'd like to have it marked A2.
A3.
A3, I'm sorry. And I'll give it to Mr. Solomon.
Any other questions? I'm not going in too far.
Raise your right hand.
Can you please state your name, spot your last name for the record?
Ahmed Wafik. First name is A H M E D and last name is W A F I K.
Do you swear or affirm tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Where is yours?
Mr. Wafik, you're one of the principals that's developing this project.
Correct, yes.
And you have been part of many of the meetings with the TAC where some of these issues were discussed, including access to the building and package drop-off. Have you come up with a way to identify how you deal with that?
Yes, so basically, we have a lot of meetings. We had like about five TAC meetings through all these aspects, including the loading dock, which was not part of the previously approved project, and the buffer also. So we basically focused a lot on how that route is going to be between the trash, between the parcels, between the delivery. By the way, our building is able to be at 40 feet height, but we actually are asking for three-and-a-half feet in order to increase the height of that loading area where it can occupy different sizes of trucks that this bit-sized building would be maximally need between the Amazon trucks, between the UPS. So these are, and our site engineer basically recommended based on these sizes. And that's why we actually raised three-and-a-half foot for that space in particular. It kind of had another benefit, which is the commercial first floor became higher in the height, which is kind of better for the way it makes use and the activity by the street. And now regarding the route, we have two different routes here regarding the packages where the residents are able to access it from the lobby. But in terms of the delivery and all the backside, we have that concrete paved walkway in the back, which they can access with no interaction to the resident circulation at the lobby. And they can access from here and be able to do deliveries for both the commercial and the residential. In addition, that door has a secure access door from the residential lobby to rear exit. So there is some kind of separation between the commercial and the residential. So there, and how we're going to be managing this property in terms of trash, in terms of, you know, all the different circulation. So we're not just going to leave it to function on its own. We're going to be making sure to manage this. And one of the proposals we are thinking is that we actually, that first storefront can be part of our management office for the building and the rest could be for other type of commercial, which we also heard to the specialists from the TAC. We were kind of worried between the parking and we're trying to limit it. So we kind of proposed at some point, only offices. of proposed at some point only offices. But we got some recommendations like, you know, this area, we need to be more vibe and we need it to be more livable, so we better have it like open, maybe a restaurant, maybe a cafe, which definitely we agree and would love, but we're trying also at the same time to make sure we are managing this property very well and not just, we can get to different kind of.
Mr. Wafik, to bring you back to Mr. Bletcher's question. The entrance to the residential component is secure. It's going to be a secure entrance, correct? And also in the report, they want cameras and all of that, which we will do.
Yes.
The question is, how do people who deliver packages to the residents? In other words, if Amazon is coming with a box for somebody in the third floor, we have the package room. How do they get into the package room if the building is secure?
So basically, they, first of all, they're going to have a specific access where the management is going to allow them through that secure door, okay, where they can access from the back, okay? And from that secure door, allowing them to get into the package room and deliver the package.
Okay, so they do not come in the residence entrance? They come in where all the other deliveries come in?
Yes.
Through the rear of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Took a long time, but we got there.
And I mean, just in another aspect, just from my own experience, because I'm involved in this project as, as a part of the developer team and as part of, I'm an architect, by the way, I'm not licensed here. I'm licensed back home in Egypt, but I have worked on tons of projects, architecture in the country, in New Jersey and New York. So this building, first of all, did not have except one handicap unit at the first floor in the previously approved project. Today, we have an elevator. All our 18 units are handicap accessible. So all the bathrooms have been increased in size. The kitchens have all the clearances and all the pathways and the clearances in the corridor have increased. The units are actually very big. I mean, we're talking about the minimum is 800 square feet per one bedroom, up to 1,000 or something. So these apartments are very flexible. Another thing, our previously approved project did not have an amenity space. Now we have an amenity space where the residents can be able to have some kind of recreational use here and have some like, kind of like, you know, a table, lounge, library, some, somewhere they can feel, especially after the pandemic, these kind of spaces is more desired. All our units do have washer and dryer closets. This was not previously there. The, the parking for the, for the bicycles is also were added. It was not previously there. We provided units, additional residential storage for the residents. This was not there. All our retail spaces have their own stairs going to their own private storage. That also was not there. So we're giving more convenience to the project, added a lot of value, and we had a lot of setbacks, which reduced our footprint of the building compared to what was before and adding the buffer. So I just wanted to add that part.
Thank you. Stay there in case they have questions. Any other questions from the board? Would, would the applicant consider going back to the concern about the delivery trucks blocking traffic away depending on the size? Would they, I mean, much like we do with the parking, would he consider putting that in, that, you know, that we would put at least a notice of restriction on the size of the? We could, we could put a, a notice in the lease to the commercial tenants that they are not to have deliveries by tractor-trailer. And as I indicated, we would also sign the building so that if a tractor-trailer went down that street, he would not try to turn into that, into that loading dock, because he won't, then he would just keep on going, so he wouldn't block the street.
And we do, actually, Jean can confirm, we have a signage proposed where we can limit this restriction of the size. Yes, correct. So we will. And also the thing is that, again, the height variance is due to the increasing the height of the first floor, where it can accumulate an additional types of trucks, where this building is not going to need a bigger truck than, than, than what we have in this loading area, which is 12 feet by 39. I mean, we have all residential and you can see the commercial spaces are not like, it's not like a Target or something. It's very small. So what kind of bigger trucks that might be needed for this building? I don't think it would be something.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, we're going to open up the public phone.
All right, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak for once in a number of five minutes on this application, please stand up, give me your name, and we'll be on the list. Anybody else? Mr. Cradville? Are there any other speakers? Who wish to speak on this application? All right, so just Mr. Cradville. Are you going to do it from that side of the?
Yeah, sure.
All right, Mr. Cradville, can you please state your name, tell your last name for the record?
Charlie Cradville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
Do you swear our firm tells the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your honor?
Thank you. Good evening, your honor. It's good, good to be back in person. I do want to ask though, is the application and the supporting documents for this available online? I looked today to try to do my homework and did not see them on the city website like I've been accustomed to.
No, as we moved back to in-person, we've made the document access back to in-person as well. So there, it's available in our office 10 days prior. You can come in, we're open to the public. You can look at any application you want.
Well, thank you for that. I'm disappointed in the board that this, you know, change has been made. Obviously, it's difficult for working people to make time in the middle of the workday to come downtown and review paper documents. Seemed like, you know, the pandemic was horrible, but one nice thing that you did was putting the documents online, so the public could access them without having to do that. And I don't understand the logic behind undoing it. Surely, these documents are digitized. Reckon the board probably receives them in your email, and I don't see why, you know, the public doesn't have the same level of, of access to them. You know, I think it's, it's unreasonable and you should change, change your practice back to posting them online. I'll note this, website still has the section up there, it's just empty. And I think that, you know, if you're truly interested in engaging the public more, getting more public input, you know, this is one easy way to do it. It's let people review the documents from the comfort of their own home instead of making them come to downtown New Brunswick during the business day. Similar to that, I'm a little disappointed that, you know, not only did I not get to review the documents before the meeting, but I really didn't get to see very much here because the easel is facing you all, whereas when the meetings used to be at City Hall, you all made it a point to have the images or the, you know, the, the visuals in a position so that the public could see it, too. So I really, like, I didn't even really get a good look at the rendering, not online. I appreciate you doing that, and yeah, this is no disrespect to the applicant here. I know they're just trying to, you know, make their case to you, but I'm, I'm glad to see this gentleman here showing the public now what the building's going to look like. And, yeah, also wanted to ask about the TAC, the Technical Advisory Commission that was alluded to by one of the witnesses. Are those meetings public or are there's not public?
The TAC meetings are not public.
Okay, so for a glorious couple of months, I was allowed in. They were public. The prior attorney invited me to come, and now the board has closed that part of the process. We heard it was a great meeting, you know, really helpful, really good technical discussion, but the public was shut out of that, too. So I'm noticing a theme here where I'm seeing, you know, the board doing its business, the applicant doing its thing, but no real public engagement. It's hard for the public to be engaged. And I do want to raise a technical point. I know there was an environmental report that was submitted. Was that part of the record that was available 10 days before the meeting, or was that submitted tonight?
That was submitted this evening. We just got the report. It was requested as part of the staff reports. Once it was requested by the city engineer, we had to retain an environmental consultant to do it, and we just got the report and we submitted it.
Okay, and.
And again, it's sort of a different world now that we're back in person. The 10-day requirement for plans still holds, but if we prepare an exhibit for a hearing because of comments, we can present them the night of the meeting. Unlike when they were virtual, they had to be there 48 hours in advance for the public and see it. That doesn't apply anymore.
Okay, well, you know, with all due respect, I think that the public should have a right to examine exhibits submitted tonight. I see a copy, I'm not going to grab it, but I see a copy of the NVPA letter that I'd like to take a look at. I'd also like to take a look at the environmental report. I don't know if there's extra copies I could look at, but, you know, I, I do think that there's a missing piece here when it comes to transparency. And again, no, you know, no disrespect to the applicant or, or Mr. Lanford, but, you know, just as a member of the public who's trying to be engaged, trying to participate, it's become a lot harder now.
It's time.
And, yep, and now also now enforcing the, the time limit that was, came about in March 2020. So, yeah, wish, wish you all the best and hopefully you can provide me with the environmental report as well as this.
The environmental report, the attorney has it. I'm going to PDF it to the city, so they will have it probably tomorrow or the next day. So, or if you contact me, I'll get it to you or give you contact information. I'd be happy to provide it.
I'll follow up. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Before we go to motion, I would ask for two conditions and then, you know, we can base it on that. Number one is the condition on not, you know, not requesting any more parking spaces.
Agreed.
And the condition on making sure that there are restrictions in terms of the, the sizes of the, you know, in the lease on the sizes of the delivery trucks coming in.
Agreed. And you want condition number three, which is the payments in lieu of the parking spaces, which is also a requirement.
We, we have that baked into our conditions list now.
I figured. Are there any other additional conditions that the board would like to request? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, based on those conditions.
I'll say it. Thank you.
Gillett to check on?
Yes.
Suzanne Scora-Ludwig?
Yes.
Crystal Letta?
Yes.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Anthony Camioni?
Yes.
Paul Cardica?
Yes.
Manny Castaneda?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving to the next session. The amendment to a Jersey standard redevelopment plan. What's your last revision?
Good night.
So based on the request from our secretary and planner, we're going to actually shift, we're going to start with C amendment to the scattered site redevelopment.
Good evening, members of the city planning board. I'm your board secretary and city planning director here tonight with two amendments to two different redevelopment plans. I hope that you've all received copies and I hope that the, the red line versions were made available to you. Bob made a point of that a few months ago, and I'm hoping that this was on point. Good, good. I want to make sure that that's accurate. Good. All right, so as Chairman Castaneda alluded to, I wanted to start with a scattered site redevelopment plan. So to begin with, the scattered site redevelopment plan is, was a redevelopment plan adopted originally in 2018 for the purposes of handling abandoned properties in the city. The city adopted a couple of years before that, a, the vacant property registration ordinance, as well as the abandoned property, abandoned property ordinance, which is enabled by the state in order to, the city, should they need to, to condemn designated abandoned properties through what's called spotlight eminent domain and flip them over to productive use. So they would not be, should they be condemned or required, they would not be done so under the municipal land use, rather the local housing and redevelopment law, but rather through spotlight, which is completely outside the scope of that. I'm just explaining the method in which it would happen, should it happen. Additionally, properties can be transferred via simple transaction of sale. Some properties from the prior list or in the pipeline, so to speak, have had property owners who are willing to convey them to the city at an agreed-upon fee at this time as well. So what this amendment seeks to do is that the original plan only targeted the first batch of what we'll call, what the city designated as abandoned properties. What they determined to be based on the construction official and other officials at the city who were empowered to make determinations on abandoned properties. Vacant properties are slightly different, but 99% of abandoned properties start off as vacant properties and become abandoned properties. The triggering for a vacant property is a property that is not, that is not inhabited, is not, that current construction has ceased or commercial activity has ended, one of those three, plus that it cannot be once again occupied or inhabited without significant repair. Basically, that the place is uninhabitable, you would not be legally able to occupy it with a business or a person without construction, investment, and time. So based on page four, we're adding vacant inclusive language to the plan. This does not include, this isn't to put every single property that's on the vacant list here. We have no intent of doing that, only the ones that we see as highly problematic properties that are likely to become abandoned. But we do want to expand the footprint of the plan to be inclusive of those vacant properties. If you proceed on to page five, it's kind of hard to see based on the way that it cut it out, but we're essentially eliminating the, the first chart and replacing it with the secondary chart, and I'll go through the new addresses. Some of them are carryovers from the prior chart, but I decided to just wipe away the entire old chart altogether. We start off with 53 and 55 Remsen Avenue. Both of these properties were, I believe, fire damaged at different times. 53 Remsen was the last one of the two to be demolished. It was demolished at the request of the city due to being, being an imminent hazard. And right now, what we have are two separate 25 by 100 lots on Remsen Ave that are contiguous to each other, but have different ownership and have no foundation or any material whatsoever remaining. The intent of the plan would be to consolidate, would be have a redeveloper consolidate both of the lots into one 5,000 by, I mean, 500, 50 by 100 lot that would be subject to the bulk standards of the R4 zone, which is technically a single-family zone, but we're not taking the uses into account, just the bulk standards. This is a typical zone for 50 by 100 lots with 0.5 FAR, relatively relaxed setbacks, five feet on one side and a total of 12 maximum with a rear yard setback of 20 feet. And a, but in this case, we would be also changing the FAR from .5, which is what the R4 uses in a single-family residential zone, to .6 to better enable the development to become an adequate two-family home on this property. Then we have 269 Power Street, two-family residential. That one was a property that was in distress, was on an abandoned property list. The estate of the prior owner has agreed with the city on a, on a price to hand off the property. This would be to just have it as part of this plan, but there would be no proposed intensification on the sites, an existing two-family house. Additionally, going to the next one, we have 133 Jones Avenue, which is a single-family residential. It was recently in a fire. It's been significantly damaged. It will probably have to be cleared, but given the lot size and the size of the prior home, we believe that it can be redeveloped to its prior conditions without any necessary intensification. So that's where that one stands at this point. There's 34 Lee Avenue, which is currently a two-family home and a church on a 50 by 100 lot. The city would seek to convert this to permit a four-family residential structure, subject to the C2A bulk standards, which are essentially the French Street bulk standards. The building is quite overbuilt. It's. It's right up to the lot lines on all sides. It actually, if it were in good, standing in good physical condition today, it would not look out of place in the French Street corridor. And we would need to maximize the existing conditions of the site in order to adequately turn it over into productive use. It's been in a bad place for, I think, well over a decade at this point. We have 10 Llewellyn Place, which is an existing, deteriorated now, single-family home. It's been on the city's abandoned list for some time, although not in this plan before. The home actually is on a 100 by 100 lot, which is double what's permitted. So, should the, should it be required to get it developed, the city recommends that someone subdivide the lot and build two new, single-family conforming homes to create two different home opportunities for folks without creating, without necessitating any variances to be granted. But we, in those cases, we're not compelling, so if somebody wants to just rehab that home as is, for whatever reason, go for it. There's 147 Remsen Avenue, which actually received an approval by the zoning board for a parking variance, an approval of existing conditions, plus an unpermitted, at the time, dormer that was installed in the building. This would just be to, anybody could redevelop, could grab the property and rehabilitate it such that it can be occupied, based on the parameters of what was granted by the zoning board back in that approval. The application number was ZB-2019-11. 175 Hamilton Street, it is a vacant lot that was a two-family residential home that burned down many years ago. To be permitted to be rebuilt under the bulk standards in our zoning code 17.03.150, which is a relatively generous standard for rebuilds that may or may not be applicable under this circumstance, but that we want to ensure that should someone want to develop it, that they can use that existing reference in our zoning code to redevelop this site as a two-family. And on 84 Hassert Street, it is also a vacant lot that was once a single-family residential. Same thing, we would want to defer to the same code in the zoning code for rebuild, but with the modification that the lot depth only be necessary to 90 feet, as that's what the lot shape is, 25 by 90. It's an awkward undersized lot. It's currently largely, mostly the basement of what the home used to be, plus the stairs. It would be a benefit to the neighborhood for both of those lots to be converted from just remnants of a fire-damaged building into homes for people. It's also not super clear, but we'd obviously be crossing out the old map. Oh, well, this is the new map up front. We'd be crossing out the old map on the back. We would be adding some language on page nine in the bulk height FAR, the building height FAR in bulk section, unless otherwise specified, specifically permitted herein. Put that on the first and the last bullet points, just for clarity's sake. The original plan only permitted existing nonconformities to be kept on the lot. So, this allows for certain properties to be, as you've been shown, modest intensifications to hopefully get them rebuilt and occupied quickly. And on page 15, it's sort of like a technical nitpick on my part, but in section six, I wanted to change from, it is anticipated that the acquisition of the property within the area in need of redevelopment to be confirmed, converted to the redevelopment plan area, as again, these properties are not subject to condemnation or acquisition under redevelopment law, but rather either through voluntary sale or through spotlight empowered by the abandoned property statute of the state of New Jersey and sort of reiterated in our own municipal code. Yep. And that kind of covers the changes to the scattered site redevelopment plan.
Thank you again for providing the redline versions of these. Very helpful. On page five, the intensification. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is consistent with the revisions that are proposed in the master plan that we'd like, result, potential changes to the municipal code, allowing for greater density, correct?
They are not, I would not call them inconsistent. I would say that there, it's not inconsistent with what's in the proposed draft of the master plan, though this only reflects what's in the current zoning code, but also neighborhood conditions and the like. So, that's why we tried, whenever possible, to keep the uses the same, even if the bulk standards would deviate a little bit to better accommodate undersized lots and what have you. With, the only one I can think of where the use deviates is the Lee Avenue one, that it would be permissible for a four-family, where right now, a maximum two-family home would be permitted by, as a use, even though it would, technically, under current zoning code, it would be undersized for a two-family. But otherwise, everything is conforming with use or it defers to an existing code for rebuilding fire-damaged properties, destroyed properties, et cetera. But, yes, so I would say it's not inconsistent with the draft master plan, but also, I would say it's not inconsistent with the existing master plan and zoning code as is right now either.
Well, I realize this, you know, is not going to make a whole lot of difference in the big scheme of things, but it's just, the question I had was, you know, you indicated in here that these are market, it's kind of market-driven, right? And then the question goes, is that, you know, if this happened, this type of strategy is used on a larger scale, such as is recommended in the master plan, you know, what compromise is, results in terms of just greater density and, you know, impacts the quality of life? Just throwing that out there. It's a small thing, but a much bigger thing in terms of the direction provided in the master plan. Any pros and cons?
I mean, I think that, I wouldn't be proposing this here before you if I didn't think that these were good ideas. I think that beyond necessary for these specific properties, if you go through most of the city, the bulk of the city was developed on 25 by 100 lots. It's not inconsistent to develop on 25 by 100 lots, even though the zoning code has changed from there. And that's sort of, I guess, why the master plan sort of reflects sort of adjusting that downward. You don't necessarily need 8,000 square feet to build a two-family home in most of the city. So, it's sort of adjusting it back closer to a balance between accessible, possible lot sizes versus what's, what fits in the zoning code. So, if you want, you know, there to be single and two-family homes, you probably have to be more reasonable about what those lot sizes are versus what we're currently looking for. And I think also, the constant variances that are given for undersized lots and stuff by the zoning board and single and two-family homes sort of reflect that the 5,000 and 8,000 standard that currently exists may not be the best fit universally. It may apply from time to time, but it seems like it hasn't been fantastic. So, as far as uses go, I don't think that there's any issue with the uses at single and two-family homes in those zones. The lot sizes may, I may feel slightly differently on it, but I do think that the uses fit and that's sort of what we're looking at here.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? We'll open it up to public comment. Mr. Solomon? Nope? We're good. All right then. Anybody? No? All right. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All right. Yolanda Chaco?
Yes.
Suzanne Scora-Lowick?
Yes.
Chris Delastra?
Yes.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Anthony Camione?
Yes.
And Bob Cardika?
Yes.
And Manny Castaneda?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I, before I do the other one, perchance, I don't, is there a water fountain out there? My throat's kind of dry. Yeah, so can I, can I just excuse myself for a second?
Yeah, I think if you go to the right.
Sorry about that. All right, so, jumping into, well, I guess, could you, I guess, formally?
So, now we're moving to B amendment to the Jersey Sanford redevelopment plan? I don't believe that there's a need to swear on?
No, I think I'm good for the rest.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you again for Chair and members of the planning board. I have one more redevelopment plan for amendment for consideration here tonight. You may recall this plan being adopted by the board many, many moons ago. I think it was back in 2019, which may as well have been 10 years ago at this point. But, I'll, I'll jump in. It was a pretty significant project of apartments and commercial spaces on Jersey Avenue between what's 900 and, I guess, addressed as 200, Jersey Avenue. It's 90, 100, 120, and 200, although there are other addresses there, but they're, I don't think they're the legal addresses of the parcels. So, just jumping into the changes, I don't think any of the changes are super significant, but we will just go through them one by one. On page eight, there was a clarification regarding parking entrances and driveways. The language originally was that they should be discouraged on Jersey Avenue, but not prohibited or banned, but that with all pressure available that they be discouraged. So, the language would change that they should be avoided on Jersey Avenue to the extent possible for the residential component of this project. An exception shall be made for access to a leasing office. A residential parking deck should be primarily accessed via Sanford Street. So, you guys have copies, you know where the underlines are. I tried to emphasize where those were, as most of that language was pre-existing. So, to the extent possible, and primarily being the items, the language added. Proceeding to page 12. A permitted use for one cellular telecommunications antenna, maximum of one site-wide. There is interest in providing a cellular antenna in that vicinity. The site is very large. Everyone needs telecommunications access. These antennas are, while not, you know, the prettiest things to look at in the whole world, everybody uses their cellphones, we need them. It would be, in my opinion, an excellent place to, if carefully located on the site, in order to better spread the ability of people to have cellular access on the site. More to come on that with the parameters and specifics. Going to page 13, we have modest modifications to the building coverage and impervious coverage standards for the plan. They are currently at 40 and 60, respectively. The changes would be to bump those up to 45 and 65. Some of the plan site had to be reconfigured due to the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission. Part of the site on the, trying to think, would that be southern? I guess it's the southern part, which is what you would call parcel 200, where the Mall Run Brook Daylights, which is to be the commercial plus the park. There are a lot of restrictions on development of that site by the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission, which has had to result in a reshaping of the site plan, which kind of intensifies the building coverages and impervious coverages in different areas versus what had originally been envisioned. So, this gives a little bit of flexibility and breathing room on both of those items. Additionally, in table 4A or 4, that there is a, from building height, it was listed as four stories. When we ended up going to TAC, it was reviewed by our planning consultants as four stories, but get the underlining, the underlying height in footage would also control. So, it became four stories slash 50 feet. That was never my intent. I did not want to limit it on height in that way. So, we're adjusting that to specify 52 feet, which is what the current iteration of the plan proposes for the commercial part only, so it's an additional two feet over, so that that's not a variance, as that was never intended to be a limiting factor, mostly on the stories was our intent. Going back to page 14, we have another table, which has the bulk standards for the antenna, which is basically a maximum height of 120 feet and certain setbacks from Jersey Avenue and Sanford to ensure minimal visibility, that it's pinned back closest to the tree line as possible and away from, detracting from the rest of the development. A lot of the other factors are kind of inapplicable, and so I didn't really touch upon them and left them as NA in the, in the bulk table there. Then proceeding to page 18 and 19, we, I removed this very complicated parking table and simplified it, the parking shall conform to RSIS, parking, yeah, parking shall conform to RSIS standards of nine-foot by 18-foot parking stall sizing and be subject to conformance with the city engineering standards, rather than adding a whole convoluted mess of different angles in here, just deferring it to our normal engineering standards plus the state RSIS stall size standards as applicable. And I'll cease using that convoluted table in future redevelopment plans as well. Forward. Yes, and then, is that, I'm just trying to make sure that that's the last item. Yeah, all right. And so, and finally, because of aforementioned lot changes due to the DRCC, the city is recommending the removal of the originally added-on bike lane that the planning board had added as a amendment to the redevelopment plan when it was first done. The nature of the site and the way that the buildings and the brook flow and exist would make it quite problematic in order to meet the requirement of providing a bike lane on-site. It also would have potentially very problematic issues in terms of liability, interconnection and crossing with the vehicle traffic of the site, whether it be commercial, the trucks on the commercial side, the people who live at the building. And while I'm a huge fan of bikes and pedestrian and discouraging driving and all that, I don't think in good conscience that the bike lane should remain on the site. I don't think that it works with the restrictions that were imposed by the DRCC and the, and the existing conditions that would be proposed. And those are the changes, and my plan's falling apart here, but that's okay. All right.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Kind of disappointed about the bike, the rule of the bike lane. Doesn't that shift the biking to Jersey Avenue, which is more dangerous?
That depends on if many people bike on Jersey Avenue or not. A lot of people do walk up and down Jersey Avenue. point of view, that the daylighting of the brook, access to what will be that park, and the limitations in terms of the slopes, the erosion, and water quality, et cetera, that will be imposed over there. You know, it's not the only thing that got limited, the, the DRCC also shrunk back the size of the development on that side of the commercial side by, I forget how many, but it was, you know, in the tens of thousands of square feet of commercial space as well. So, it's just sort of a reality of operating that close to the, to the canal, or the brook, rather. So, that's just sort of there.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, do we have any opening up to public comment? Mr. Sullivan, if you can swear, and Mr. Cradville?
I think he's still swearing from before, right?
He accepts his prior statement.
Very nice. Thank you.
Good evening, Charlie Cradville, once again. Is there going to be a traffic signal at Sanford?
That's the intent, yeah. It's being worked out between the city and the county right now.
Okay, but it sounds like folks are going to be able to access the parking deck from Jersey, and they'll be turning into and out of it?
There'll be two ways in and out of the parking deck.
Okay.
From Sanford, all the way to the back end of Sanford Inn, and also one access point, I believe, from Jersey Avenue.
Okay, I'm a little concerned about that, it's already not, not super safe, and, you know, adding, what is this, 600 units, cramming all the cars into a parking deck, and having folks all come in and out at the same time could be a problem. So, urge you to reconsider that request that's being made tonight. I imagine that probably came from the developer, for whatever reason. Share your disappointment in losing the bike lane, I don't think that makes good sense either. Wanted to revisit an issue that came up the first time. I know there was a split vote of the board about affordable housing, and what the plan would say about that. Can somebody refresh my memory, where, is this 10% affordable?
That's correct. The plan and the project would be 10% affordable at 60% of area median income. So that'd be, 66 units in the building will be affordable at 60% of area median income.
Okay. And if I recall, Mr. Crum was the Chair, and he made a motion for there to be, was it more affordable units, or maybe?
So, Mr. Cradville, the 10% was already in the plan. Mr. Crum requested that it would be 60% of area median income, rather than it be just between anything from 0 to 80. So he wanted to make sure that it was lower in the income brackets, to make sure that people who really needed affordable housing were actually getting it, rather than people who are, who give, you know, borderline forward market rate housing were getting in under that cutoff. So, the 60% was his request from that meeting.
Okay, so that, that's still in the plan?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think you've probably heard from some people about this, probably including me, really not happy with the way that this particular developer treated their tenants at 100 Jersey Avenue, and unceremoniously dropped off notices that they had to be out in 30 days, right around the holidays. And, just want to caution you that these are not folks who should be dictating what the project is going to be. This is a redevelopment area, the city and you have the authority to set forth what's in the plan, and they have not, in my opinion, not been good actors so far. This is their first project in New Brunswick, and they're off to a bad start, given all the uproar that we saw from the tenants there at 100 Jersey Avenue. There are some really good places in there that are now out of a place, had to leave town, the boxing gym, and lots of other good community institutions that are just, of course, you know, Puerto Rican Action Board leaving town. This, it didn't have to go this way, but it went this way because of this developer, the way they chose to approach it. And so, really caution you, don't, don't bend over backwards for these guys. You know, they, they should, they should do good for the city. And that, that's really all that I have to say on this, but thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
If I may, I just wanted to add something. Looking at the, the map sort of triggered a memory from many moons ago. Part of losing the bike lane as well, is that a part of this redevelopment area unrelated to the fact that it's in a redevelopment, well, redevelopment plan area, rehabilitation area. NJ Transit eminent domain part of the land for a, for a rail yard, so that they could work on their trucks, I mean their, their rail carts and pull them aside. So, a not insignificant portion of the parcel was carved out and taken for, for transit's use, so just wanted to put that on the record as well.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Chris, can I get a second? Oh, thank you very much.
Alright, Yola Tchakko?
Yes.
Suzanne Sephar-Lowey?
Yes.
Chris Delatello?
Yes.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Zach Wright?
I'm standing first.
Anthony Camioni?
Yes.
Robert Cardigan?
Yes.
Manny Gattuso?
Yes. Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on to section six, other matters of interest to the public. Mr. Lemon, you're back in your secretarial duties.
Alright, are there any members of the public who wish to address the board? Seeing one, Mr. Cradville? Yep. Oh, we have two? Oh. Can I get a name for the list?
Your name?
Sean Carlucci. I'm sorry, Sean. I'm sorry, last name?
Sean Carlucci, C-A-R-L-U-C-C-I.
C-A-R, it doesn't, the sound doesn't carry well here.
L-U-C-C-I, sorry.
Carlucci?
Yeah.
Alright, fine. Alright, I guess alphabetically, Mr. Carlucci, you're up first.
I just had a question regarding, you were talking about the burnt, there was, the burned down houses. And on Easton Avenue, there is a, a house, I believe it's 124?
Corner of Easton and Hamilton?
Yeah, on Hamilton. And I've noticed that on Easton, they have been redoing the sidewalks, which is very nice, and they're adding in trees, which is very nice as well. But I was wondering what's going on with that house, and?
That, it was, it was burned down some months ago. The, the owner came in for permits, and they put up a construction fence, and they are supposedly working on rehabilitating it. They submitted, we, we sent them a notice of a vacant property registration, and one of the things that they can do under that is, rather than register and pay the fee, you're allowed to submit some semblance of a plan, essentially a strategy of what you're going to do. It can be very simple, straightforward, and you can get an abeyance or sort of a deferral on the fees for up to a year, and that you're going to have that place rehabbed and occupied within a year. So that's what they're doing, they're claiming that they're going to have it rehabbed and occupied, and they're working on it. So they, they have that grace for that one-year term, and I guess at this point, 11 and a half months, and we'll see if they actually follow through. But I've spoken to the owner a few times, and I believe she has a lot of interest in actually pursuing that.
Okay, and that, and that one section of the, of the street, when they're doing all, redoing all the sidewalks, that one little part, they didn't actually continue the sidewalk. It looks like they're going to put down a grass row. And I was wondering, how far is the sidewalk of, I don't know, reconstruction, rather? How far is that going to extend? Is that just going to be on that section of Easton? Or is that further down?
So, that's sort of a complicated question, because that's the county's right-of-way, it's not the city's. So that whole project is sort of operating from the county's perspective. I don't know to the extent that their right-of-way goes. If Dan Burke was here, he would have, our, our city engineer, he'd have a better idea of what their footprint is. Regrettably, I don't. So I don't know what their, how their, how that's going to manifest itself at the end, but it's sort of within the scope of the county's project however they laid it out.
And you guys support that at all? You, you, you support the, because you know, they said the board is very in favor for the walkability factor, and having, having those nice trees, and having a large section of walkway, especially because Rutgers students. So is that something that you guys are in favor of, or no?
Well, that's, the board, I mean, I think the board and certain members of the board have expressed interest to make sure that there's walkability, so I think that's been answered.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cradville, you're on.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, editor in New Brunswick today. I see that the meeting is being recorded not only by me, but also by that audio device there. Why don't you post the recordings of the meeting on the internet? Is that something you would support, Mr. Chair? Similar to how the council?
We've been certainly looking into it.
Okay. I hope that you'll, you'll support it. You know, go to other towns, they have the meetings livestreamed, live video, people can tune in from their mobile device or their home, wherever they're at. The meetings are sometimes even remotely accessible, and that's something I wanted to ask about. Is there a reason you're not offering a remote access option for individuals who cannot attend in person, for any reason?
At this point, I'm not aware, is there a particular reason?
Well, we'll take it under consideration. We'll take it under consideration.
Okay, I think that would, that would be the best of both worlds, because, you know, people still do get sick, or, you know, have an exposure to somebody who was sick, and they may still really want to speak on an application, but, you know, be apprehensive about coming to an in-person gathering. Will these meetings return to City Hall, or are you going to keep the courthouse?
For now, we're using the courthouse. I want to make sure that my board feels comfortable with their spacing here. I do believe that this has a little bit, you know, we have a larger board than the city council is, right, by almost double. I want to make sure that my board members have enough room that they feel comfortable. As things evolve, in terms of the pandemic, and our board members' comfort level, and the court's availability to allow us to use this space, we will address and assess where we operate the meetings.
Okay. How about the issue I raised about publishing the documents for each application on the internet? Seems like that's something that would take a very small amount of time and energy, and would, would be, have a transparency benefit. Mr. Chair, would you support that?
I, I have taken note of that, and I will look into it.
Okay, thank you, I hope you will support it. I have to ask about the lawsuit against the board, can I get an update on the litigation filed last year?
Is there a particular update? Mr. Sullivan?
I'm not sure which litigation you're referring to.
So, um?
Oh, the car wash?
Yes.
That is in the... They're still waiting for some response from the applicant's attorney, if I recall correctly. I think the court's still waiting for a response from the applicant's attorney.
From the other side?
I believe so.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be closely following that. I also wanted to ask about the requirement that a member of this board also serve on the environmental commission. You were out of compliance for many months after the departure of Mr. Petrellino. Has the board corrected this, or has the city corrected this? If so, when did you come into compliance?
Yes, so it's my understanding that Mr. Ferguson has been appointed, I've received a, I've received correspondence from the mayor's office appointing Mr. Ferguson to that position. Off the top of my head, I don't remember, I'd say circa two weeks ago. I don't, I can't say exactly when it was, but, but we've received correspondence to the effect of his appointment.
Okay, and he's going to continue to stay on this board?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for, for answering, I'll follow up to get the specifics. I did want to welcome the new attorney, and, ask, you know, is this a permanent new attorney? I know the former attorney is now sitting on a bench like yourself?
This is, this is, yes, this is now, he's been sworn in.
Okay, and so the board took a vote to, to make him the, the board attorney. Is he also going to represent the zoning board as well?
Yes.
Okay. And is he also going to be a?
One minute, just.
Yeah, thank you. Is he going to be a city employee, like, or is he a city employee now?
Yes.
Okay, and, and just for the record, he's also an employee of the, the firm Bob Smith and Associates, right? Or, or no?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, well, I think that's all I had for tonight. Good to be back with you, have a great evening.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to a jury, can I get a motion to a jury? Thank you.
On paper?
Aye.
On the post? Okay, everyone, ready now.